We'll call the meeting order. We've got public comments. First on the agenda, do we have anyone signed up?
We have Lucy Swanson and Robin Lang. And at your pleasure, you can either wait till that item or it appears the topics are Arts Foundation and Robin Lang for Pollard Theater. You can choose to have them speak first or end the item.
Okay, we'll just do it when the item comes up.
Fantastic.
That's all right with everybody.
Fantastic.
Discussion regarding Code of Ordinances, Chapter Three, Animals.
Last council meeting, Councilmember Thomas asked us to take a look at the animals ordinances in your packet. We sent that out and we sent the articles on animals. And Mr. Thomas, if you would give us some direction on what would you like to look at?
I just want to know about having chickens in your front yard and things like that. I've got some help here, I think.
Sure. Currently in the Code of Ordinances, fowl such as turkey, geese, chickens, ducks, not rhinoceros, not giraffe, but fowl specifically are allowed in an enclosed area. They may run at large. So current ordinance does not specify the location for that enclosed area, but that they may not run at large. As far as any code that's in the current ordinances, that's what we have for chickens.
Roosters included, I guess?
Roosters, yes ma'am, I missed that one.
Well, they're chickens.
Yeah, but they make more noise.
There's a very strong noise article within that section.
Okay.
And then there's maintenance of animals such as you must care for them, feed them.
Can you walk across the road and they come up to your door? They don't ring the doorbell, but they eat and then you walk them back across the road?
That would be considered running at large. They should not be at large.
Well, their names are Huey, Dewey, Louie, and Fred.
I was wondering if we shouldn't be talking about whether we want that sort of image in the front yard. In the backyard, that's not a big issue, but the front yard, having chickens in your front yard, whether they're trapped in a fence or...
I believe in the particular, sure, in the particular location that you're speaking, this location happens to be on a corner, so in essence it has two frontage areas, the front and the side, which are really two fronts. So I see where you're going. The ordinance as it stands now doesn't say where you can't or can have them. It only in terms of location for where you would keep small animals such as this is that it can't be less than 40 feet from a neighboring house. It can be as close as possible to the owner's home, but cannot be within 40 feet of a neighboring area.
We're on page two.
So if council wanted to entertain us looking at amending the ordinance to add the language by which would designate the location of an enclosed area, we'd be happy to take suggestions and put it on another council agenda.
I'd like to see us move forward with that.
In an attempt, as we draft language, it would be to amend the language that location would be designated to backyard only?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Okay.
Okay.
Is there going to be a fine to this?
Not visible from the street, is that stronger language that we could? I don't know how, I guess it's going to be, of course, new, everything else is grandfathered, so I think that would be appropriate.
Not visible from public roadway.
I mean, because we...
Okay. What if it's visible from a private neighbor?
Like Shore Drive?
Sure.
They come right across from the lake, eat and go back? I can't handle it.
Yeah, seriously, they can't. They have to be enclosed.
If they're owned by someone, if they're wild geese, I don't know how...
They live there now three years and they come every morning for breakfast at nine, they come at supper at five, and then they go back to the loo.
He's feeding them.
He's got them treated.
It's like the peabody.
Huey, Dewey, Louie and Fred, I mean, come on, they're four years old.
Maybe just specifically not visible from the road itself.
Public.
Okay, plain devil's advocate, then I could put a fence in my front yard to close it. We have to be really specific.
Well, not in the front yard and not visible from the road.
Okay, okay. Or side yard?
Or side yard.
It's a corner line?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Hazel would have asked if there was a fine associated with this. Currently, the fine is, goes through municipal court.
I know there would be a maximum of $20.
For each of her.
No, I've been doing it for three years.
She went on the record, we will chart, no, each of her, so more than equal.
I don't think I could stop them, I really don't.
You'd have to have a racketarian charge.
Okay, we'll take a look at that and get you language for the next meeting, is there?
Well, this is going to be, stuff now is going to be grandfathered, but it's all once we get it done, it'd be from that day forward.
I think you've got to exempt the Lake, I think you've got to, Lake Shore Drive, you have to exempt it.
In the ordinance, I don't think animals that are not owned are exempted anyways. If they're wild animals, you can't allow them to do much.
Oh, well, I'm covered then.
Yours are wild.
No problem.
Other than you feed them, yeah.
No problem.
Okay.
The location, I believe that you're referencing, I went by there this afternoon, it appears they have planted some plants around the exterior of the area. So I'm assuming and hoping that it would grow up to match the existing hedge that's just to the south of the new pen.
Fantastic. Without any other discussion on item two, I'd move to item three. Item three is discussion regarding fencing requirements in residential zoning, because that was kind of with it. Do you still want to move forward and talk about fencing or would...
Well, we've got some issues with fences around here. We've got some good ordinance for new properties, but I think when someone puts up a new fence in their yard, we need to have that defined as well.
You're absolutely correct. We do have a design guidelines that is in your packet that talks about what kind of fences are allowed in a residential, but not in a commercial zone. Now, there is a section that's within the zoning ordinance that was ordinance number 3062. And you're right, that's where we do get into some confusion. And part of the problem there, I believe, is that there is not a permit required if somebody's going to be putting up their fence. Now, we have come before council on other situations where a person is wanting to put up a fence, but they're crossing the right of way, and that's what triggers the notice.
And that's another issue, but...
Yes, and that's another issue.
So what you're asking for is if we had a permit process, you'd have to come in and go for a quick plan review for the design guide.
Yes, exactly. Now, the other issue that we have to entertain quite frequently, we talk to people about when they come in and say, hey, we want to put up a chain link fence, we discuss how that is going to affect the neighborhood and such. But we're in a, between a rock and a hard spot. If you look down the street and two doors away, a person has, another neighbor has a chain link fence, then the gentleman standing at our window says, I want one of those also.
We don't have anywhere in the code that would allow us to say no.
Not for existing construction.
Existing. So my wood fence falls down, I go and price it, I want to put up a new fence and I choose chain link fence, there's nowhere, it is cheaper. There's nowhere in the ordinance by which we could say you can't do that.
Is that new construction, though?
Not, we consider new construction of the whole location.
To replace it otherwise?
So it's considered a re...
Right, but I mean, if you had it in place, then it would initiate the future changeover to either wood fences or wood stone, whatever combinations, other than chain link.
Is that a big concern? Is something falling and replacing it with chain fence or...
No, it's just, that was an example, but any situation where an existing house, that owner of that house wants to now put up a fence because they bought a dog and they want to let the dog roam.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is what's the origin of this concern?
Well, can you imagine my house with a chain link fence running around the front?
I'm not, I'm not approaching any fence.
I'm just saying, it would not look good, and we have not considered that, that it would not look good. It probably would drive the property values in my area down.
I mean, we already have an ordinance, so you can't put a new chain link fence for a new construction.
That's correct.
My question is, what's the origin of this concern? Is it, was it trying to fix? What's the problem it was trying to fix specifically?
Well, actually, it goes back from my concern, it goes back to the one that was the right of way issue, because they were asking about chain link fence, and the chain link fence did not look good to begin with, but if they're crossing in the right way was another issue. But it's the appearance issue of how bad some of these things look in wrong places.
He's talking about the one on Wince.
Yeah, but that would have been new construction, would it not?
No, the house was there.
The house was there.
Oh, so you're saying that new fence itself, okay, so no fence to a new fence, that's not new construction itself, oh.
Because it's a house, you're talking about new construction.
Okay.
When you're building the house and you put a fence up, that's new construction.
Okay, well, we need to do something about that.
My house is there and I want to put a fence up, I'm going to have to actually get a permit to do that.
I just wasn't clear on new construction. I thought, hey, for no fence, that's new construction, but I guess not.
I mean, even if we did make a permit for a fence, if somebody wants to put up a new fence and we say, okay, here's the guidelines, here's what we'll allow, here's what's not allowed, I mean, we've got to make the fence permit economically viable. It can't be a ridiculous permit.
No, 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 we agree.
I mean, it's got to be something.
This is historic Guthrie, Oklahoma.
I've seen fence permits in small towns at $10.
Yeah, I mean, it's got to be something very minimal.
Not too much historic about a chain link fence around my house.
Well, I can understand why you wouldn't want, but there are people in Guthrie that would, and I'm not going to take it away from everybody, it's not fair. This is Guthrie.
I'd be curious to see other ordinances around, from other communities, if you could round something out, just something that we could look at to try to formulate a decent idea as we move forward.
Would council entertain us, bring other ordinances from some benchmark like size in size of cities, and we'll put it on another workshop rather than bringing forward an amendment to the...
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you're in a historic district, that's altogether different than Lake Guthrie.
Could differ the zones, I guess. Okay, something like that.
Yeah, just something for us to look at some other cities, some other municipalities, and what they're doing and how they're doing it, just so we can kind of develop an idea.
Sure. Consensus, yes? Any notes? Good, all right.
Sounds good.
Great. Item number four, discussion regarding public arts endowment. Yield some time to Ms. Coffin, I believe, to start us with conversation and then however you all want to do that.
I think we should first, Ms. Langley would like to speak. Liz, did you want to speak tonight? Ms. Langley, would you like to speak for the arts people here tonight? As you see around you, there's a lot of people here from the arts tonight, all kinds of arts.
Right.
And I'd love to hear what you say first before I say anything.
And I'd like to invite you to the table. And we do have a little bit of time constraint, and we have five minutes typically for speaking. And if you'd like to sit at the head of the table, there's no drop or anything, there's no button we hit that flips your chair or anything like that, no.
Oh, shoot, I need to be excited tonight.
Mrs. Langley is here with pneumonia. Now, let me tell you, this is serious. She really loves what she's about to say, her heart's in it. Listen to what she has to say, because it's very special.
Well, my name is Robin Lang and I'm vice president of Guthrie Arts and Humanities Council. And I do want to thank you for granting me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Pollard Theater. As she said, I am ill, and rather than go into my usual diatribe about the Pollard Theater, I would like to ask that you grant me just that I read a prepared message to you, because I'll soon run out of lung matter, plus I'm on codeine, so Coffin's thought is real positive tonight. First, I'd like to tell you that the Pollard Theater is alive and well, but actually, what I can actually tell you is that the Pollard Theater is alive. I'm here tonight to ask for your financial support, and that's something that we haven't had to do in the past, because we were funded through the state. When we did find out that we would no longer be funded by the state, we didn't just step back on our glory days and our laurels and wait for somebody to figure out what we could do. And over the years, we've implemented a great many cost-cutting measures and to date have a restructuring and refining process that meets weekly to try to find ways to garner money and make us run more efficiently. As I said, over the years, we've implemented a great many cost-cutting measures, including drastically cutting our actors and staff. An organization that once had 17 employees now touts a mere five. Two of those are, one is our managing director and one is our artistic director, the other three are employed actors. Those five now do the job of 17 and more. We have actors that are building sets, painting, sewing, doing whatever it takes to continue to put on quality productions at the Pollard Theater. We've also done some fundraising initiatives on our own. We created an annual gala, which I've seen many of you are in, annual gala, and I don't need to say no more about how much fun that is. And we established an encore fundraising campaign. And one of our pride and joys is our Backstage Society, which is a fundraising source. The other thing that we've done is, when we got in crisis mode, we started looking at how we could raise money, and one of those sources is obviously grants. And almost always on a grant application, somewhere on that grant, they're going to ask us, what do you get from your city? And I can't tell you truthfully whether saying zero has cost us anything, but obviously it's important or they wouldn't ask it. It's not just grants that ask us that, it's corporations and other funding sources that we go to, because quite frankly, they feel that, you know, the Pollard Theater is pretty important to the town of Guthrie and therefore, why not? As a matter of fact, I had the opportunity to entertain one of the fundraising chairs for Allied Arts a couple of weeks ago, and that was one of the first questions she asked me was, what does the city do? I did, in defense of our city, point out that we haven't had to ask you for anything before, so the reason why you see a zero in there is because we haven't made that request. However, during our most recent financial setback, which I guess you probably read about in the papers last summer, I began doing some research into how regional theaters are supported. And the industry standard, I can tell you, is that they are funded through the hotel motel tax, with a portion of that tax being dedicated to the arts. What portion, I guess depends on the size of your community and what other things are going on in those communities, but it is, seems to be the industry standard. In January, I sent each of you a letter outlining the almost $2 million impact that the Pollard Theater has on this city itself. That does not take into effect the, what would be the applicable trickle-down to all of our restaurants, shops and hotels that benefit from the Pollard Theater. The Pollard Theater as we know it and love it cannot survive without help. Already, we are trying to produce shows on a shoestring budget and minimal staff. Eventually, attrition will get us as our patronage dies off and we lose our standing in the arts community and we become a community theater rather than a regional theater of the professional nature. Just yesterday at the doctor's, I told them they had to get me well, because I needed to speak to the city about the Pollard Theater. The nurse's response was, oh, I was just there last weekend. We went to Gagea Steakhouse for dinner, then to the play, and across to Venech 89 to talk off the evening, something they do every time a play is in town. Clearly, it's the Pollard Theater that brought them to Guthrie. No matter where you go in Oklahoma, whether it's southern tip, the east, west or north, when you say Guthrie, they think the Pollard Theater and vice versa. I'm here tonight to ask you to please find a way to help us so that no one ever says, oh, Guthrie, that's where the Pollard used to be. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, everybody that's sitting in this room can, because they love the arts in Guthrie. Be it Richard Hendrick's $50,000 baseball collection that was just donated to him, that's an art. You go in there and you'll see the art on the wall, it's beautiful. You go down to Brian Berline, to his group that plays beautiful music, his little thing he has down there, his little shop, wonderful. He's willing to teach kids how to play a banjo or a guitar. You look at this town and you look at the arts from one end to the other. You take the Pollard Theater for instance, wouldn't you like to see your grandchildren or your children in a play there in the summer? Can you imagine all the people that would pack in to see your 12-year-old or your 6-year-old in a play, or Trey Ayers, two girls in a play? We'd all be there. But they don't have that opportunity, because we the people have not done anything about it. But tonight, we have we the people here, and this city council is here present. Together, we can work hand in hand to make this a great, wonderful arts community. There are so many things that we could bring into this town. I mean, you go into a little town like Roswell, New Mexico, they have the Georgia O'Keefe Festival, little bitty town, something like that. There's no telling what kind of art festivals Mary could come up with. Mary is our president of the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, I've got a list that long that would I like to see here in this town that I love and would like to see. But in my time, before I die, we should step up to the plate and make some kind of arts council foundation from the city and say, yes, we want this, we're going to make it happen. There's a lot to it. I emailed you guys a lot of information about what we're trying to do here, but tonight is the night to take that step forward and say, yes, we're going to be counted for it and we're going to do something about it. I know that we can. Do you realize across the nation, the United States, there's $103.1 billion spent on the arts? What have we got in Guthrie? A little here, a little there, and we're hanging on by our toenails. No more. We can come up in the world. We can be an arts capital of the world in this little town. We're set up for it. It couldn't be a better place. But it's got to light the fire tonight and pass the torch and get it on an election to the people and make it happen. I don't want to be dead and gone here in 10 years and say the Pollard goodbye, because this art council, this council here didn't stand up and take the torch and go with it. And Trey Ayers, you're the man to take us there tonight. And Mary Coffin, if I say anymore, I'll have my foot in my mouth. But I think you guys get the gist of how important this is tonight. These citizens didn't come to hear us do nothing. When they came before and Mike Stirkel spoke, what did we follow up and do? Nothing. What are we going to do tonight? Carry the torch and make it happen, guys. We've got a great plan. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Coffin, she's president of the Chamber of Commerce, and she knows exactly how we've got this written out to follow and make it happen. And I certainly appreciate your time and effort here tonight, ladies and gentlemen, as this is very close to my heart. And Mary, thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Well, we have a solution for the problem that we have in town that will fix the whole community, that will help the whole community. And Erin's got a slideshow, we brought a slideshow, we want to go through it, and we've, hopefully everybody has our pass outs, our... Did you get one, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. We're, this is, I'm going to go through everything, but, and I want to tell you in a nutshell, this is modeled after what Norman's doing. This is not anything new. They've, they have a great idea, what they've done is they've turned their whole little town around and created, what they're doing is they take their hotel motel tax and 50% of the money goes into their Convention and Visitors Bureau, then they have 25% that goes to their parks, and 25% goes to an arts foundation that they've created. And so this arts foundation that they've set up basically is the venue for the money to go through, but people have to apply for a grant through this arts foundation. So they don't give it to just anybody, they're going to give it to somebody in the community that's actually going to do some work and have some great projects, okay? I feel like, and we've talked to numerous people, we've talked to Byron, we've talked to Wallace Owens, we've talked to some people from the school about what we're wanting to do, and they feel like this is a great idea. And I hadn't even talked to the Pollard about it, and I know they're going to be supportive of this. So that's what we want to talk about tonight. Erin, can you, I'm sorry, thanks, okay. So Lucy and I will kind of tag team this a little bit, but go to the next slide, Erin, if you will, we'll give you some reasons why we think that this is important. The arts active in communities generate income, employment and tax revenue. They're recognized for attracting businesses and retaining a creative workforce. Communities that actively develop and support their arts and cultural assets present an image of vitality, creativity and positive growth. Arts audiences generate related commerce for local businesses such as restaurants, hotels and retail establishments, generating an estimated 1.3, 103.1 billion nationwide of revenue for local merchants and their communities. Non-resident audiences spend more than twice as much as resident audiences, 57, 67 versus 2253. Arts active communities have a strong advantage for economic growth over communities that do not develop or support cultural development.
And if I could just say something to that over and over again, when we have spoken, and I'm sure Cody can attest to this, when we've spoken to people about bringing businesses and moving into town, a lot of businesses don't come, not because they don't love Guthrie and everything, but because the demographic here won't support the business that they want to bring. What the arts will do is bring a different demographic into Guthrie to live and to come and visit, and so it'll, and it'll also increase the traffic tremendously, because arts people are very, very loyal. They tend to really hang on to what they believe in and what they appreciate. So having an arts community that is thriving and active and focused in Guthrie, I think, is, will really increase the quality of life here by bringing really...
Well, it'll help us create a bit of a balance in the community, too, because Cody's working on bringing businesses in, we've got to have people to support those businesses. They have to have something to do when they're here. Right now, there's a Pollard and there's Byron. The shops close down at 5 o'clock, there's nothing for them to do at night. If we don't start doing things that extend later on and there's, there needs to be other things. When we go out and sell a show to a tour bus, they want to come to town and they want to have something to do besides eating shop. They want to be entertained. We have, and doing this, setting this arts program up will help us achieve those goals that we need to have in mind. Otherwise, we're not going to get people into town, you know, I mean, not as many. They'll have to say, okay, I can only come here because the Pollard's showing on this night, or I can only come here because Byron's showing on this night. There's not every weekend that there's something to do in town. This will change that. Got Erin?
Quality of life, you're here.
Okay, quality of life. In order to attract and retain Oklahoma's young professionals, cities must provide the amenities and lifestyle options that they desire. Increasingly, businesses are selecting locations based on amenities rather than tax incentives. A high standard of living ranked second just below salary in surveys related to job appeal for technology workers, increasing job attractiveness by 33%. Bringing in culture helps to create a sense of place in residents, creating pride and enthusiasm about their home. Next slide, the tourism benefits. You've got the Travel Industry Association of America claims that the cultural tourist typically stays longer and spends more money than other visitors. An arts culture will support the businesses that are already in town, increase the opportunity for more new businesses to thrive. Will make it more attractive for new businesses to come to town, thereby attracting more tourism. Creating an arts district will provide a focal point for growth of other attractions unique to Guthrie, such as restaurants, museums, shops, performance venues and more. There's no reason for everybody to go to Oklahoma City and Edmond and make them stay here. Arts and children, just having arts in the community enhances social development, it enhances the scholistic achievement that students participating in sustaining arts instruction typically perform from 16 to 18% higher in academic achievement tests over those who have had little or no art instruction. Building or builds resilience and confidence, helps pave the way to a successful transition into adulthood, creates, increases ability to complete tasks, increase teamwork skills through collaborative arts, creative problem-solving skills, critical analysis, risk-taking as part of the creative process, offers opportunities to develop leadership skills and become civically engaged. Your SAT scores, there's multiple independent studies that have shown that more, in more years in arts courses, the higher the SAT verbal and math scores. For four years of more arts instruction, they outperform their peers. I can go to the next one. How do we achieve this? We create a Guthrie Arts Foundation, which is modeled after the Norman Arts Council. We fund it through a renewed distribution of the hotel motel tax. If we were to increase the hotel motel tax, say to 8%, in order to offset the change in distribution and increased use, this is modeled after what Norman does, paid for by visitors to Norman in the form of a lodging tax. It benefits the Norman residents by improving their quality of life by providing destination marketing, 50% to the CBB for every dollar that is invested in destination marketing, $59 is spent by visitors. Oklahoma Tourist and Recreation Department conversion and advertising effectiveness studies where that came from. The Norman Arts Council gets 25% dedicated monies for art stimulation and support, and then the 25 cents goes, or 25% goes to parks and recreation, dedicated monies for improving the parks, the tennis complexes, softball, baseball, water slides, playgrounds.
Mary, can we add to that, the large oil companies like Sandridge and Chesapeake Bay that are now doing work in Logan County? When they look at a foundation like that, they're going to write you some big checks, because we've never had it before, and this is our opportunity to start getting those big checks added to the money that we would get from the hotel motel tax.
When cities support the arts, people give you money.
They give you big money.
If they don't support the arts, you will not receive money from them. If they don't support the arts, you will not receive money from those corporations.
And also, it, it's an advantage to have an entity in place that's specifically for that purpose, so that they feel that when they, when they give you the funds...
When they do, they know it's gonna be managed properly.
Yeah.
Yes, and it's taxable, yeah. Okay, so the impact, according to Oklahoma's, for the arts, every dollar of funding that goes into the arts, eight dollars is an economic impact. So last year, they had a hundred forty-five thousand rented out to the groups, those projects totaled 1.4 million dollars, that is phenomenal. Uh, the programs then created 11.2 million in economic impact in Norman, and that's, that's pretty big stuff.
Just out of curiosity, in the Norman model here that we're talking about, how many different distributions of art projects were they distributed to?
Oh, gosh, a lot. Many, many.
Okay, we're just talking about distributing to one.
No, sir.
Okay, ask what I'm asking.
We're talking about new.
It'll be a grant, it'll be a grant process.
It'll be just like the arts.
So people would apply if they have a project, if the Pollard had a project, everybody...
It's basically a foundation of individual artists in town, and it's their choice who they fund, I mean, they're gonna have to do a grant to say, okay, we're gonna fund so-and-so. We're gonna fund the sports museum because Jim Thorpe's gonna take their, uh, take it away from them next year. They want it to move to Oklahoma City. You want that to go to Oklahoma City? You want us to lose another museum?
That's what I'm asking the question.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We have to have a arts foundation in town, we have to, where there's Byron, there's Wallace Owens, there's Bobo's Art, there's...
Guthrie Arts Day, there's City Arts.
Yeah, and so you get people from all our individual entities who have arts, and they're the decision-makers, they're in charge of it, just like the council would be in charge of different things. Then the funding goes through them, and then they say, okay, here's our grant, or here's our application, and everybody will apply for whatever it is they need, and then it's either gonna be denied or given to them.
We have the information about their whole setup, exactly how they have their arts program set up and, and the, the distribution of power.
Trey, in nineteen eighty-nine, Norman was sitting and looking at their arts, wondering why it wouldn't go anywhere, well, they got thirty people like this right here in a room with their city council, and they passed that motel hotel tax, twenty-five percent to their art, and you know what they took in last year? Eleven point two million in Norman.
Well, they're a little bigger than we are.
But you don't understand, Trey, we're not gonna stay like this, we're gonna grow, we're gonna be big.
Do they have performance criteria associated with the grants?
Every, yes, yes. And they, they don't grant more than quarter percent of any project, uh, on that last slide. They, they have real stringent criteria, and I think that would be important for us to have as well, because you just can't have people handing out money because their Uncle Hester wants to put on a play in the backyard.
You want to talk about that?
I will. Based upon Councilmember Hazelwood's request for us to take a look at Norman, what you see before you is I took the way we currently distribute hotel tax. So I have the ballot language in front of me that was from nineteen ninety-eight. The way the ballot language said in nineteen ninety-eight for the distribution of, of money, it, it does not say that the sixty-six percent goes to the CBB, that was a contract between the council and CBB. The way the ballot language reads is that a sixty-six percent, two-thirds, will go to promotion of tourism. So sixty-six percent currently goes to promotion of tourism, the other third goes to parks. So what you see before you is, on your left side, is the current breakdown of four percent hotel tax. In FY twelve, from October one to September thirtieth, the city revenueed a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty-seven. In the ballot language, it says the city takes five percent off the top, the remaining is broken out from the sixty-six and the thirty-three. So, for example, the last, last year in FY twelve, the CBB should have received ninety-six thousand, but we did ninety-nine thousand because we didn't take the five percent off the top, but neither here nor there, the CBB received ninety-nine thousand dollars. The Parks Department received a little over, well, forty-eight thousand. So, for example, I, so I've listed that. If you go to the right side, I broke it down to, if you modeled the Norman way, at fifty percent to a CBB, twenty-five percent to arts, and twenty-five percent to parks, you can see, take the same amount of money and break it down that way. And then I went ahead and took the liberty to show you what it would look like if you did a five percent, a six percent, or a seven percent hotel tax.
Plus, we need to look at Guthrie, I mean, Enid and Ponca City's at eight percent.
So, basically, one percent is approximately forty thousand dollars increase in revenue. So, I apologize for not putting eight percent on there, but just pretend at about forty thousand dollars to that number. So I just wanted to do a little bit of comparison. I will say that without a vote of the people right now, the way the ballot is written, you could spend, you could still do that sixty-six percent to something like the Arts Council because your, your language says to promote tourism. So I want to be clear that you're not absent of able to do that similar now, but that would mean that the, the, the contract with the chamber would, what would be altered. I'm specifically saying what would have to go to the vote of the people. Right now, the vote of the people is four percent, at four percent total hotel tax revenue with sixty-six percent going to, to tourism, but it does not define, the voters did not decide CBB, the council decided that avenue as the best way to, to spend that money. So, I, I'm just, I'm just giving you all, all possible options. There is a way to do, uh, uh, there's, there is another way. The, the city just wanted to look at, how do we do it now versus how can we do it in the, in the future? So, I just wanted to model the Norman way, which would be to set up the foundation first. It, it should be a 501(c)(3) prior to, because where would the money go? So it needs to establish first and foremost. Um, if the council's, you know, wants to sit on this for a while, I know we're short on time, I just wanted to be the wet blanket in the room and give you numbers. I wanted to give you numbers. So when we talk about percentages, often we don't know how many dollars that is. So I'd be happy if you see anything on this spreadsheet and take it home, take a look at it, that, but I, I wanted to bring up the ballot language of what our voters expect us to do right now, which, which we're doing, with sixty-six percent.
Because the money comes from the visitors, not from our citizens here.
Typically not, typically, a hotel is from the visitors.
We've got about halfway through that PowerPoint, so...
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't want you to leave without numbers.
No, I was, don't, don't we have a Guthrie Arts Council in place? Didn't, didn't we have a 501(c)(3) or a...
Like what we need, Trey.
Well, we do, we have, yes.
Well, we have, it's a historical...
But right now, the only project is the Pollard Theater, that's the board...
Guthrie Arts and Humanities.
The Guthrie Arts and Humanities Council.
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, I, I thought...
We, the city, don't go there.
I mean...
We're 501(c)(3), but we're not a foundation. And as Dan said, we, at this current time, we only represent the Pollard Theater, but we only represent them because we're under financial constraints just to support that one, so, that's why, that's why we operate the way we are.
Now, foundation re-grants monies, we, we don't.
We don't, yeah, I understand.
Not foundation.
So we'd have to re-establish a new foundation.
Yes, yes.
We should do this for children.
Would it be under the Arts and Humanities Council? The new foundation under it, or a separate entity?
They would have to apply for the grant to the foundation.
Everybody would.
Everybody would.
Everybody would.
It would be fair.
That way, it's gonna be fair. Right?
Trey, sometimes that money will build up in that fund, to the point, with all the big donations from Chesapeake and Sandridge and people like that, you could run the whole darn thing off the interest of the money that you got. You gotta think out of the box, think ahead.
I, I got a question, wouldn't you have to have this foundation before you move forward with someone?
Exactly, while we're talking about...
So it seems like to me, before we even push for this very hard, we need to create the...
Before we even bother doing it, is there any interest? Because I'm not gonna sit here and work on putting something together when it's not gonna go...
Well, one thing to think about, even if there isn't interest, let's say, um, in, on, for the, from the city, there would be interest from private donors, so it does make sense to start a foundation, allow private donors, and if the city decides to...
Private donors might do it, but your big corporations will not, because the city does not support it.
I'm just saying, it's a, kind of a snowball effect, there could be, you know...
The city's gotta take the step, though, John, to make it happen.
It's actually putting the cart before the horse if you do it in that manner, because it's like when we make grant application, we have private lenders, that's how we're still alive, but the first question they ask is, what does your city do for you? And if they're not, why not?
What I'm saying, though, is if, if, let's say the city decided to do this, if we had voted the people, there's no foundation to give to, because there's not one created.
There will be when we set it up.
So, foundations don't take five days to do, I mean, you realize that even a 501(c)(3) it takes several months to do. Foundations are not a, wake up in the morning, there's a foundation, that takes months. It's gonna take longer than it would take, let's say if we rushed through a ballot amendment, it would, or a ballot of people, it would be quicker to do a ballot of people than a foundation officially, so...
Well, I'm not saying that we do that, John, I'm not saying that, I'm not in a rush for it, I think that we need to put some things in place to make it happen. I'm not, there should not be a rush to do anything like that, we need to be careful about what we're doing, we need to do it right.
I just think it's a...
And we need, it's for the community.
It's a win-win situation to start foundation regardless, right now, and then as we consider this, they would...
My, my question is, who's, who's responsible for putting that foundation in place? Is that a city's responsibility, or is that the Arts Council's?
Well, we would take that on, the, the chamber would take that on.
If you look at the Norman document, they set it up to where the city had, um, they set up in the language, like, they're, well, they're, they've got OU there, but they designated who would be on the board, there'd be a person from OU Athletics, a person, the mayor sat on it, a city staffer, and so they...
And they had a director.
Actually set it up, so the council did set up the, the board.
You know what, I know you spent some time talking to them, is it even possible to have them come up and just share with you?
Erin said she would.
I'd love to have her here, just to talk to her and, you know, and see, I mean, you know, the, you know, the, the Romans modeled that after the Greeks, and the Greeks after the Egyptians.
They've given Patty a ton of information that you guys already have.
I already made sure you got all that.
They will definitely have.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to have them here.
Just don't slow it down, make it happen.
Well, another, another real advantage to doing this, besides just collecting money and giving it back out, is to create an arts district in Guthrie, to create a community of artists that, for instance, the Paseo, we have tons more already in place than the Paseo does now, after all these years. So if we were to be able to consolidate the, if we were able to consolidate all of the arts that we have here in town, we have artisans, we have craftsmen, we have theater, we have all the performing arts, we have all the, I mean, the visual arts, we've got everything here already. All we need is a focus point, all we need is a group, an entity, not even, an entity where that's the touch point, that's the place where everybody goes, that's the place where people find out what we have, how we have it, and what we're gonna do with it. And that's how we get bigger, that's how we attract Edmund people coming here instead of running Oklahoma City or wherever else they want to go. I mean, we need to keep our people here and we need to promote our people, we need to encourage them, and people, artists have been coming to Guthrie for ages, for decades, because it's a cool place to be.
Two, two good examples is Lisa Sorrell's wanting to, uh, teach people how to inlay and overlay boots, and she's, you know, needs help doing that, she wants to create a DVD and a video, and a, and a book to do that, she, this would be perfect for her. Uh, the sports museum, Richard said that their contract comes up, they want to move to Oklahoma City, though, they need funding just to operate. If they had operating expenses, then they wouldn't even be linked up with the Jim Thorpe deal right now. So, that's another perfect example of what this arts foundation could do. We don't need to lose any more of our museums to Oklahoma City.
Bottom line, what all the wonderful arts need is what I was asking for, for my group. We all need money. There's no, no doubt that this is a...
Make this the city council do access to it.
Okay, no, we're out of time, I'm sorry.
Great presentation, staff has received the direction to bring forward Erin to do another workshop.
At the next council meeting?
At the next, I'll check her schedule, but Erin told me today that she'd be happy to take on the arts council.
Don't, don't let this die, guys, really pick it up when you listen to her, pick it up and go with it, for the children of Guthrie, do it. Don't let this be the city council pass the buck again.
Number five, discussion regarding agenda items, there are two items that I want to bring before you, one, if you, uh, the airport board has made a recommendation to cancel the contract with total investments in an effort to move to surety. We do have our engineer here to discuss any questions that you might, might have, it is the board's recommendation of the airport and the recommendation of our engineer that we, um, uh, because of delay on, delay on schedule, um, and their inability to finish on the scheduled time that we move to surety, uh, do you, do I want to take one minute to hear from the engineer, please come up? Tell the whole story in thirty seconds.
All right. I'm Curt Brown, Garber Engineers, Airport Engineer, I'm here because we are recommending the surety, uh, because the contractor is not able to perform in a timely manner and is continuing to experience slippage in his schedule. Um, he is, uh, by, in the contract documents, actually in default in several areas, it doesn't necessarily mean you have to declare him in default, but I am under the obligation to inform you of those, uh, items. Uh, we, there'll probably be a fairly animated discussion in council tonight, so please be prepared for that, and I can give a little bit more of a briefing, but kind of where we're at is we're sixty percent of the way through the contract, twenty-eight percent of the way through the money, and about, uh, eighteen percent out of twenty is through...
I don't mean to cut you off, but is, is the contractor planning on being at the meeting?
Yes, the contractor is planning on being here this evening.
And I would suggest we have this discussion at the city council.
What were you mad at?
We'll do that, so there's where we're at.
There you go, thank you, have a great day, we'll see you in a minute. Next item is a follow-up from the last workshop on territorial square dancers, we had asked Andy to go back and ask his tenant if there was a price, that council, at last council workshop, there were different numbers thrown out, we heard a hundred dollars rent, we heard no change, we didn't have exact direction. Andy, um, do you have any comments about the current tenant and their, their intentions?
Right now, the last time I talked to them, they were out looking at six houses, so I don't know how long they are gonna be there, but I do want to keep tenants in that apartment because otherwise they will trash that, that building, I don't want, don't want them to do that.
Okay. Any comments, questions about territorial square dancer contract on the facility?
Did we ever, uh, find information on how, uh, the, I'm not sure how many square feet that is, that area, uh, how much that would cost typically, what, you know?
Um, I did briefly ask Jan Goodyear, and he happens to, to be here, but, you know, for a, for a small dwelling with a, a toilet and a shower and a roof over your head, et cetera...
I mean, square feet, oh, yeah, or, you know?
I'm sorry, in fact, less than a thousand, the living space is even smaller, you know, there's, there's the big area, and then there's four hundred square...
Four hundred square feet?
And a living area?
Is that right?
Well, it's, it's combination of living and dining, so...
We don't, I mean, that, it's hard to compare a, a price, but we are seeing a high rental market within Guthrie of seven hundred dollars for housing.
I think you and I talked about five or six hundred.
For four square feet?
Well, no, not before...
It's not the, it, it's just having ability to live somewhere with a running, functioning, air, heat.
More of a place to live.
Place to live.
I mean, we can make it inexpensive if you're adding, taking care of the property, so...
Sure.
And I think it, it would be easy to fill that in if we make it a competitive price, a fairly lower price, and then, you know...
Is the profit...
Say, even two fifty a month, that would be, would that be a pretty good deal, Jan? Two fifty a month?
Oh, yeah.
And then take care of the property, and that's, that way, that we're not totally giving away our assets, we're helping take care of the property, um, they could just say, this is the price, and the price, that money goes to us.
May I address that?
Yeah.
Currently, territorial squares only has twenty dues-paying members. Dues are five dollars a month, so we got one hundred dollars a month coming in from dues. We have a split deposit each dance, because we only have two dances a month, roughly eighty dollars. That's a hundred and eighty dollars that we have as operating expenses. If we have to pay money for the monthly rental, I think we ought to enter into a tenant landlord-type agreement, where the city would pick up the maintenance. This includes the driveway, right now, that driveway's in terrible shape, it's gonna cost us roughly fifteen hundred dollars to put gravel on it. And, right now, we don't have...
Andy, I apologize, it is a regular agenda item, you're welcome to have the discussion again at seven o'clock, we've got to move within sixty seconds. Um, the, uh, the next item is future agenda items, how about this, if y'all just want to email me anything that you want to see on the agenda, I'd be happy to, to put it on there for the sake of time.
Okay, I'll, I'll send you something, because I've got something.